We're gonna tell Andy later. Um, we've got, um, is, we should probably unmute, uh, GCTV and just make sure they're in good shape.
Victoria?
Oh, Victoria, there she goes.
What about David?
I'm not seeing him yet.
Margarita, did you just promote, um, Victoria?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Okay, GCTV, um, uh, GCTV, are you all set?
They're muted still.
If you wanna turn on your mic, GCTV, and just let us know you're all set. Jenny Larkin's got her hand up. Jenny, go.
Well, you need to put, um, my, my, my video's not on.
Well, you have to turn it on, sweetie.
Um, so I'm here. Craig, I think, is the GCTV in the meeting, and he's working with Horst to, um, make sure it's on. And I guess it's gonna start automatically on our new equipment at five. So, um, that's the way that's supposed to work, but you would, you could unmute GCTV, which I think is Craig Jones.
I did unmute them, but they had their mic off.
Okay. All right. So I'm just gonna stay in the back. I'm gonna kinda watch what's going on. If, if I see anything, would you like me to text you? Do you need me for anything else?
Um, no, just whatever you need to tell us. Victoria, you've got your stuff. Can you turn it on?
Got it.
And, um, Levy's still out. Somebody else just came in.
Um, Dave's in.
Hardman, I got him.
You wanna just test Russ, just because he's, he's in?
Hold on a sec. Let me, I'm doing, um,
And Bruce?
Um, Hardman should be all set. There's Yaski.
I'm on.
Okay, um, Yaski's good.
Margarita, I'm on.
I see you are. Okay, you want me to, Russ?
Well, maybe just do Bruce. Bruce is here. Why, why don't we bring Bruce in?
I don't, oh, there he is. Okay, hold on. Um, do I make, uh, do I allow him to talk? Do I make him a panelist now or later? Later, right?
Might as well do it now and just have that mic.
Uh, Jenny's got her hand up again.
Yes, I'm just trying to be polite. So, um, are, just make sure you record the meeting, cuz it's not automatic. Um, whenever.
Jenny, yesterday it was automatic.
And this is a webinar?
Well, I don't, all right, I'll make sure it's recorded.
Yeah, just make sure you see, if you have the option to record it, then that means it's not recording it. So, keep an eye on the upper left. Uh, yeah, just in case, cuz you're right. I just realized I'm not a host, so I have a different perspective. So just look around and make sure that on the upper left, you'll see a little thing that says recording. And if that's not going now, you have a record button in the lower panel of the screen that you can hit to record when you choose to.
Never fear, um.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Has his hand up. Is he done?
That WWW portal dot office dot com, and then what?
Um.
But your, your, it'd be your town email and then your password that you use to get into your town email.
Peter, could you take that offline for a sec? Cuz, um, GCTV, you have your hand up. What do you need to say to us? Nope. Okay, taking your hand back down, Craig. Craig, is that his name?
Is he unmuted? Yeah, Craig.
I had muted him and he had his hand up.
And back up again.
Yeah, just try to make sure. Sometimes you have to allow him to speak and then unmute him.
I did. He, it's, his mic is allowed, but he's not talking. I'm looking at it. It's great.
You know, maybe it's Horst. You know, I just, cuz I know Horst and Craig are.
Name is GCTV, whatever his name is.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll let.
Back online, your camera and your mic, Ross.
Pat?
Yes.
Can I say something that we learned today? We were doing some, uh, meetings, and Craig has actually handled the, uh, select, first selectmen's, um, press conferences, and he was, said that everyone on the panel really needs to make sure that they're muted when they're not speaking, which you may have already, you know, discussed this. But you should also be prepared, cuz you have the panelist, uh, screen.
Whoever's bumping, whoever's bumping.
Yeah, you can mute everyone. Pat, can you mute?
Just gonna say, I, I can, I just.
Panelists.
Yeah, I can mute everybody.
Okay, so you gotta do that every once in a while. And even though you've muted them, the panelists, they can unmute themselves. So just periodically, just hit mute all so that it just keeps the background noise down in the meeting because, yeah.
And, but it doesn't mute the panelists? So would you guys be careful not to hit your mics with stuff?
It does mute the panelists. They just have the option of, of unmuting themselves.
Correct. So, yeah, so, so just somebody in the meeting, keep, just keep muting the panelists when they're not speaking, because it's hard for people to remember to do this, and they should be concentrating on what's going on in the meeting. And again, still try to mute yourself, but one of the, the host or the co-host should be constantly kind of muting people that aren't speaking.
Yeah, I can, I can handle that, cuz Pat's gonna be the, the, uh, screens, and he's got two, two computers to cover.
Okay, and you're a host? Cuz that, you can't.
Yeah, I'm a host.
Okay, great.
Who, who is, who is taking questions? Who is taking hand raises? Again, I just wanna make sure.
Margarita's doing all of that. You're handling the screens. Um, and I can handle the mute. And Margarita, you need to, um, you're gonna talk to people when they, when they come in and do the hands and all that.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll work it out. We may have to switch it around as we go. Um.
We have a hand raise right now.
Okay, um, that hand raise is Horst from, um, GCTV. Horst, talk to us. Okay, Horst. Oh, yep, go ahead. Horst? Horst? Okay, he went away again. Horst?
Here we go.
Oh, okay.
I'm running this meeting remotely. So if, if something's not right, call me. Get me on this, uh.
Okay, Pat.
You are broadcasting. You're broadcasting right now on GCTV.
Okay, Pat, um, the, his email address is T as in Tom. Oh.
I'm gonna unmute everybody. I'm gonna mute everybody right now.
Please mute them. Keep muting, yeah.
Go ahead, Margarita.
His, his email address is T Tango Echo Bravo Bravo Echo at alum Alpha Lima Uniform Mike dot.
I'm not, I'm not getting, I'm not fast enough, sorry.
I've, I've got it. Go ahead. I've got it. What's alum dot?
RPI dot edu.
All right, I'll text it to Pat.
His last name is Tango Echo Bravo Bravo Echo at alum dot RPI dot edu, and he wants us to email him when there's a problem.
Yep.
Okay, um, Pat, we, we have, we open and close people's mics at the same time, and sometimes we're falling over each other, but we'll figure that.
You just let me be the person who mutes it? That way, Margarita, you can, you can, when you're ready to unmute someone with a hand or something, you deal with that, but if it's just the general mute all, I can do it.
Yeah, so.
It's, uh, five o'clock.
Dave is back, Dave is back in the, I gotta promote Dave again to panelist. He's back into the um, attendee room here.
Oh, good.
On, I'm just checking the attendee list, make sure everybody's on, and then I'm going to promote, I'm gonna promote Mr. Cohen to a panelist.
Um, I did that already, I thought.
Uh, no, I'll do it right now.
Confirm record as well. Just confirm that record is on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, if Mr., if, if you wanna, uh, start, Margarita, uh, whenever you're ready, and then Mr. Cohen can, can jump in when it says his point.
Yes. Hold on, I have a, just a little technical thing I have to do first. Well, I'll wait. Okay, I'll do it later. Okay, I'm just gonna check that we've got everybody. Yaski, are you good?
Yeah, I have to unmute to say good. You want us unmute, you want us muted right now, right?
Yeah, unless you need to, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little better, because people slap things around. There's folks that have dogs, you know. Okie doke. So, here we go. Good evening, uh, this is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting is being held pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7B, which allows for virtual meetings and suspends the requirements for in-person meetings. Uh, with that, we begin our public hearing. The first item on the agenda is the Greenwich Academy. Uh, Mr. Cohen will be representing the academy. Mr. Cohen, are you ready?
Yes. Did you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you. Thank you.
Um, whoops. Everything just, uh, fell apart here, just.
Um, okay, you're gonna show, what, oh, this is just the documents that, uh, you're gonna, uh, Mr. Leroux is gonna share something, is the documents that you're showing.
Hmm. Yeah. Uh, can you, uh, plan any better than that, any larger? It, it's not showing the whole thing.
Um, it is, it is showing a screen, Mr. Cohen, so, um.
Yeah, okay. That, that's good enough for me. Um, except that it doesn't show.
Double click.
The portion of the. Say it again.
Double click to open the PDF. It doesn't open?
No, it's, it's.
It's a little better. But, uh.
No, I, I, there's, there is a severe delay, guys. Hold on. Please hold. There, there's a delay here.
That's good. Can everybody see that now?
Yes.
Okay, well, let me, let me begin. Uh, there's our members of the commission. As you said, that's Bruce Cohen, and I'm representing Greenwich Academy. This is a uh, that the, uh, commission held the 20th of February, and we appreciate our being able to uh, continue this and hopefully close it tonight, and thank people who worked you well done to make this happen. Um, if, if you, well, what, uh, what this is, is a application for, uh, final site plan and special, uh, special permit approval to allow a, a, an, a modification and addition to the existing, uh, Performing Arts Center at the, uh, main campus of Greenwich Academy for the purpose of adding a, um, a component, uh, to that building that will serve as a visual arts, uh, center. As you know, uh, applicant, uh, last year presented a master plan for all of their, uh, uh, campus improvements, and this is the very last phase consisting of the visual arts, uh, center, as well as landscape, uh, improvements to uh, the, uh, Harrison Courtyard, which is, uh, a, a landscape area poorly used founded by the upper and middle school, and the Ruth West Campbell Hall and Young Hall at Harrison. You can see it on the image, uh, on the, at the upper right-hand corner. That is the, uh, Harrison Courtyard showing the proposed, uh, improvements. The addition to the um, Performing Arts Center is shown in, uh, the, in the lower left-hand corner. Um, I, I guess it is. And, uh, at the meeting that you held on the 25th of February, there were several things that, uh, remained open, matters kept open, uh, for the purpose of resolving them, and let me quickly go through those. First, uh, had to do with some comments that, uh, and recommendations that the ARC, uh, made. Uh, we went back to ARC and, uh, were, uh, I think, well, the, uh, the, the plans were modified to meet their recommendations, uh, both architectural with respect to the, uh, to the Visual Arts Center, and also the uh, very important landscape changes that were suggested and, uh, made to the Harrison Courtyard. The, the main change for the courtyard had to do with uh, uh, provide for, or really 100% uh, accessibility on each level. The, the courtyard itself has a 22-foot drop from top to bottom, top being, uh, uh, the, the back of Ruth West Campbell and the bottom being the, I, I guess, most westerly portion of the courtyard, and it's now, in fact, 100% uh, accessible. And, um, but you're creating, uh, accessible, uh, ramps and accesses to, uh, each of the levels that it, uh, that meets. Um, the image before you is a, uh, a recreation of what you're proposing based on the current, um, uh, current aerial. Uh, and you'll see, just in the center, uh, just, uh, slightly above the, uh, drop-off loop, the, uh, section of the, um, existing Performing Arts Center that is being uh, modified and added, uh, to the, to the right. You really cannot, uh, see the changes yet that were proposed uh, to the Harrison Courtyard, but I, I think the, uh, the, uh, site plan, uh, the, the first image you saw is probably a better visualization than that, so i- in any event, the, the R C, I, I believe, was, uh, happy with the changes we made. They wanted to steal a couple of uh, things that we can return electronically, uh, as they stated in the, uh, in their minutes that were with your, uh, material. The second issue that was open had to do with, uh, uh, comments that, uh, Rich Fomenella of the Sewardage had made, and I believe, uh, based on a, uh, an email that, uh, Mr. Fomenella sent, which is now up on the screen. Um, he is content with, uh, the information we provided for him, and that the, the balance of the items that he's raised could be handled during the, uh, training phase. Uh, incidentally, one issue that I believe had been raised, uh, uh, at the briefing session, had to do with the modification uh, to the drop-off loop. I, I wonder, Pat, if you could get back to the very first image. Um, yeah, yeah, there you are. The, the, part of the A R C comments had to do with the creation of really a, a campus green area that will now extend from, uh, Ruth West Campbell Hall all the way down to the new, uh, courtyard at the western side of the, uh, V C addition. In order to achieve that, and, and we've been able to achieve it, uh, and I think was a very good point that A R C made, and it's what the campus is, uh, that was happy to see, made to the campus. But to do it, we had to flatten out, uh, the western end of that drive uh, up loop, or drop off loop, and, um, the question was, was that any of the briefings, that that impacted the applicable turning radii, and we did submit a, uh, a, a drawing to, uh, to, to staff changing the radii and how that both a, a bus and a car can make that, uh, turn at the same time.
Mr. Cohen, I can break that up if you'd like that.
Um, I think everybody is familiar with it, but if you have it nearby, it'd be good.
Excuse me, I just wanna jump in. Um, for those who are, uh, trying to dial in, um, if anyone, uh, uh, the phone number, yeah. Go ahead. The phone number is six four six five one eight nine eight oh five. And the webinar ID is five seven eight six three five nine five three with the password seven seven nine nine seven four.
In actuality, Mr. Cohen, if, if, um, Ms. Larkin would be kind enough to repeat that information, it would be helpful if you would switch over to, uh, if you would dial in now and use your phone to talk to us, cuz we were having a very hard time hearing you over your computer.
All right, are you prepared to write it down? I can give you the phone number to write it down.
Sure.
Okay. It's six four six five one eight nine eight zero five. The webinar ID is.
Hold on a second. It's nine eight zero what?
It's nine eight zero five. So, all right, I'll repeat it after I'm done. The webinar ID is five seven eight six three five nine five three. You'll also need a password, and that is seven seven nine nine seven four.
Um, Margarita?
Yes, ma'am.
I have two public comments that I need to read in. Um, if, if maybe you, do you want me to do that now when Mr. Cohen calls in or, or later?
Yes, um, we could do it now. Uh, normally, we wait until the commission has commented, but why don't you go ahead and, and do it now?
Okay, so there's two. One is, um, from Leslie Tarkington. Um, and she notes, "We would expect that the commission would not close the Greenwich Academy item this evening for public comment. We do not see any mention of protections for this expanded Performing Arts Center for the neighborhood and reconfirmation of all the protections provided and imposed by past planning and zoning commissions to protect the neighborhood, including required busing, restricted use of the auditorium for a certain number of times a year, and to ensure that all existing restrictions are reinforced to include the expanded Performing Arts Center. In addition, there is a drainage problem coming off the Greenwich Academy driveway. During any major storm, the water runs down the driveway into the public storm drains and downhillside drive. Francine Drive has been shortened because of the water and drainage issues. Whether it is Francine, Hillside, or Ridgeview Avenue, there are no storm drains down at the bottom of the bowl. We are disappointed that the staff and commission have been so reliant on the applicant and its agents for this fast-tracked application. We do not know when this application opened at the commission, but given that the Planning and Zoning Office has been closed about three weeks at least, we would request that this application be left open. Thank you for these considerations."
I, I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Cohen. Um, are you all dialed in yet?
I, I tried to dial it, but I couldn't get, uh, I needed the pass code.
Um, Ms. Larkin, could you give him the passcode?
It's, it's, is it the password?
It's the password that's on the meeting.
For the dial-in, yeah.
Seven seven nine nine seven four.
Yeah, I tried that. Maybe I should try, uh, a, uh, asterisk or something afterward.
Okay, well, Mr. Cohen, maybe, maybe we'll wait. Um, why don't we wait and, and let's ask you the questions that, um, uh, I think we probably need to go over what is in this e- email with you again. Uh, have Katie, has Mr. Cohen seen this email? As I remember, it came in a few minutes ago.
Yeah, it just, it just came in right before, um, a little before five, and I have a, another one here. Um,
Well, it, can we just?
Some of the same issues, but, but basically.
Let's, let's, um, let, let's just give them to Mr. Cohen, cuz he was focused on dialing at the time. So.
So, essentially, it's a question about, um, including other, um, conditions imposed by past planning and zoning commissions, such as the required busing, restricted use of the auditorium for a certain number of times a year, and that, um, all existing restrictions are reen, are reinforced to include the expanding, expanded Performing Arts Center. That's one set of issues. If you wanna hit those first.
Yeah, uh, as, as you'll note, uh, fir- first of all, this is not a I, I wouldn't consider this a fast track, even though we're doing this by Zoom. The application originally was filed by December. Our hearing was February 25th. Uh, you know, it's, it's preceded in armed course, and to respond to that particular issue, our, our application specifically noted the conditions and stated that all prior conditions would continue to apply to the ratio that he, uh, raised. Uh, in, in fact, we are reducing impervious surface, and, uh, and that's, uh, that, two of our applications. So, you know, I think it's terribly unfair for uh, somebody to put in a, a comment like that, but having first read the application using, uh, the applicant of doing, doing on a fast-track basis, but it certainly isn't. The way, I, I didn't get the name of the writer.
That was, that, that was Leslie Tarkington.
And.
Okay.
But now, the other thing that I think we could definitely, um, they make.
Tarkington, sorry.
Um, yes, they make a, yes, it was Mr. and, it was Leslie and Marcus Tarkington. Um, they, they also mentioned a drainage issue. Now, I understand that uh, this has been reviewed by engineering, the drainage plan, um, and as I recall, we asked quite a few questions about it in February. Uh, but why don't we forward you this email? And then, uh, what would be best, I think, is that we, um, request that you address this comment that has been raised. Um, I, I, let's see what the commission wants to do, but I believe that we could do it prior to permit, since DPW Engineering has reviewed the drainage.
Ma- Madam Chair, I'd just like to point out that this was a drainage exemption, so the materials in here, as it was, it, this represents a reduction in impervious coverage on the site.
Oh, of course.
So the applicant, uh, applicant's engineer has properly completed the forms that, that reflect that and, uh, have self-certified, but what I will say is that the prior iteration, the application, um, for the, um, the lower school and the upper school that, that's under construction now, had an extensive drainage report and evaluation done, and, uh, I don't believe that issue was either identified or, uh, brought up to anyone's attention then, so, uh, we could certainly, um, see if that's something that was overlooked, but, uh, for the meanings of this proposal, uh, they, they appear to be in compliance with the drainage manual.
Okay.
Uh, if, if I might, since we're on drainage, can I, can I read the second comment? This is from Karen. It has to do with drainage?
Yes.
Um, she says, "I have heard from neighbors who are very concerned about the runoff and drainage emanating from the property that finds its way downhillside road and Francine Road. I would ask that this be further, no, excuse me, I would ask that this be examined further to assure that the flooding that currently exists is not exacerbated by the expansion of the proposed Performing Arts Center. I would, as such, I would ask that the commission look into this further and not close these applications tonight."
Well, uh, it, in response to that, in light, lack of impervious service for this application is being, is being reduced, and, and for the entire, uh, project last year with the, uh, master plan that we, uh, had submitted and have been working on since then, the DW has approved our, uh, the drainage, uh, plan, and, uh, what we're doing right now is making it better by reducing impervious surface. So, to raise this issue right now, out of, out of the blue sky without having anybody notice, I, I think it's, uh, it's not the right way to function, and, and I certainly hope it doesn't the commission's condition in this matter.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I ask a question?
Uh, please go ahead, Mr. Yaski.
Mr. Cohen, um, given what we're going through, I assume the school is closed right now. Is it feasible that they're gonna go ahead with this Phase Two anytime in the near future?
You, you mean based upon the school is closed?
Well, no, I'm just curious to see whether, you know, what we're dealing with.
Oh, yes. The, the answer is yes. So it's, it's part of their construction. I think they would like to start it as soon as conditions allow, yeah.
Really? And where, related question, where is Phase One? How far along are they? I haven't been back to the site in a month or so, so, um.
They're moving ahead with it.
And the estimated completion is?
I, I believe steel is up for the, for the lower school building.
Oh, no, it's more than that now, a month ago that was.
Yeah, quite a bit.
And is there Phase Three to this? And is there a phase three to this?
This is it.
This is phase three?
Yeah.
I missed a phase there somewhere.
I I did too. But there have been a number of changes to the campus that have received the approval of the commission and have been permitted and are being undertaken in that. This is the last phase.
Okay, last phase, all right, call it the last phase. Very good, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Yes, uh, Nick McRyder. It it seems that there's concerns about uh flooding. Although it seems that uh we really don't know where it's coming from. It hasn't been uh kind of solidified exactly what's causing it. It would seem to me that we've got a situation here where maybe uh prior prior to permit that we just find out where it is. It could be, in my opinion, that it's actually just coming from um uh, the existing conditions of the the open construction site. Uh, maybe there's an issue with soil erosion controls or something happening there and that the uh the drainage uh hasn't been completed on that part, and maybe that's where the water is from coming from. But uh, I think uh it's something maybe to be looked into, but I think in a situation where we are prior to permit, uh, because there's a lot to do out there, there's a lot that's happening out there. If there's water in the street, it can be coming from someplace completely different um on the site.
Yes, I would be in agreement with that. Um, I I think that's a great idea, Mr. McRyder.
And we would have no problem with that either, Ms. Alvin.
Um, miss, anybody else from the commission have comments at this time?
What I I do, Peter Lowe.
Mr. Lowe, go ahead.
Uh, I'm wondering, was this a pre-existing condition or an ongoing problem that uh that the neighbors have been suffering from, or was this a a recent development?
Uh, Mr. Luca, could you just read the paragraph that pertains to drainage in the in those emails?
Yes. In addition, there is a drainage problem coming off the Greenwich Academy driveway. During any major storm, the water runs down the driveway into the public storm drains and downhillside drive. Francine Drive has been shortened because of the water and drainage issues. Whether it is Francine, Hillside Drive, or Ridgeview Avenue, there are no storm drains down at the bottom of the bowl.
So that doesn't really uh address whether that that was an existing condition or one occasion by the construction.
Although it sounds right, it sounds like it's just during storm events and, you know, water obviously does flow over the land during storm events. Um, but there is, but there is no catch basin to catch it, I guess, and and that goes back to the point of the exemption and there being, you know, theoretically, a reduction of any issues considering the impervious surfaces are being reduced. Margarita, you're you're muted at the moment, by the way, if you're.
I know that I know it's muted. Um. Here's my thought. Um, one question I was going to ask you, Katie, isn't that part of the problem that they're raising? If it's at the bottom of the drive and it's catch basins, is that not a DPW issue?
Right, it sounds, it sounds like it would be in the road.
Um, I I think that the best thing to do, given that there may be a public road issue, is just to address that. Not having anything to do with the application, um, but rather with the the condition of the street itself and that we should address that separately with DPW.
Yeah, I'm not aware that DPW has ever noted that this is an issue that needs to be solved. Um, certainly, we had, certainly, they have identified issues in the past with when application, when applicants come in um, and have asked, you know, through their comments at the commission work with the applicant to solve those issues, and that this is not one of them that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And again, this is now, I think, the third time we've heard this application.
Yeah, that was my recollection as well. Um, I didn't have a chance to look it up. I know we heard it in February.
Uh, it's the second, Madam Chair, if, uh, but uh, again, we did, we did take up the um issue of the lower school and phase one of this project in the beginning.
Okay.
Before, so.
All right, okay, thank you. Um.
Madam Chair, if I may, Nick McRyder again.
Yes.
Uh, I'm looking at the street view of uh North Maple at Hillside. And I see three catch basins. Uh, one at the corner of Hillside and North Maple and two on the uh I guess it's the uh, the west side of North Maple. Um, I'm also looking downhillside. And it seems that there's one just a few feet in from the, uh, excuse me, two, just a few feet in from the top of Hillside and North Maple. So if there's flooding, it might be a situation where uh maybe one of those catch basins, which are there in on this, on the road, might be clogged, and that's why it's causing their flooding issues.
Okay.
And so what's your suggestion, Mr. McRyder?
Uh, I I think actually, uh, because Mr. Lucas said maybe, or Mr. LaRose, that it could be just a a DPW issue to start with, just make sure that the catch basins that are out there on the street are working properly and are not clogged and are draining in the proper way.
Yeah, that's that that's kind of what Margarita already suggested, that we forward this issue to DPW and have them work with the applicant to address any issues during the permit phase.
Mm-hmm, okay, agreed.
All right, so we've got a solution there. Um, anybody else have any comments?
Um, pardon me, I don't, I don't quite recollect um what the lighting plan is. Is this, is this something that's going to come back to us or or is there a was there any uh um, you know, because you have all this new landscaping, so I I seem to remember something about a lighting plan.
I believe A R C has reviewed it already and approved it.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, um, on the A R C, um, what they had, oops, sorry, guys. What they.
Let me, let me mute everybody quickly.
Okay, what um, the A R C comments, uh, we discussed them at the briefing yesterday. Uh, and it was about the trees and the landscaping, and what we had left it out was that the final landscaping plan, the tree plan, would be reviewed again by Conservation, potentially with input from Hine and Conti, since they are also working on the Greenscape Task Force for the P O C D. And just in general, um, and since they are also A R C, but that's where we had left it. They had requested some changes. I believe that's in our briefing material.
And you wanted to go back to, you wanted to go to Conservation or back to A R C by?
Prior to permit, no, just prior to permit, what we had said yesterday was that prior to permit, it would be reviewed, you know, it would just get the final sign off from uh, the the Hine, Conti, and and that's Hine and Conti acting as the P O C D Greenscape. And uh, also that Conservation is satisfied with the trees. That's where we had left it at the briefing yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, um, anybody else from the commission?
And our, we we, um, Victoria Gosu. And Mr. LaRose, we discussed the F A R report, and I believe that Mr. LaRose said yesterday at the briefing that we don't, we don't have it yet.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Ms. Gos?
Do, we had discussed the F A R report at the briefing yesterday.
Yes, we did, and that's just a standard requirement um that prior to issuing permit, um, the calculations for the F A R are reconfirmed by the Z E O. That's what that comment relates to.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we discussed yesterday and that that would be acceptable. It's a standard, it's a standard condition that when somebody gives you an F A R number, that Jody has to make sure it's right. Because you know, why trust? No, just kidding. Um, okay. But one, one question is, um, the the point that Mr. Cohen had made at the first meeting is that there's no expansion in 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 terms of number of students um as a, as you know, coupled with this performing arts center application. Um, so I think he had already mentioned that the previous require, um, restrictions imposed on the existing performer, performing arts would be acceptable as part of this, of this application.
Correct, that this is not an expansion. Um, perhaps, Mr. Cohen, it would be appropriate if you went over um that for um, just so you know, I think most of the people that are that are involved and that are attending this meeting as public are here for the Greenwich High School pre-application, but we do have uh forty-three people um who have joined us. Uh, if for their benefit, you would just go over how the capacity compares to what is in place right now.
Uh, there is no change in the enrollment. Uh, and all of the conditions that were imposed at the time that the uh Performing Arts Center was approved by the condition, commission, including limitation on outside events and that sort of thing would would remain. In other words, the applicant is not requesting any change in condition or any increase in either enrollment or attendance uh because of this uh addition. It's really intended to free up some space in the upper school in order to make classrooms a little bigger uh and provide for uh uh visual arts, uh both the learning and visual uh areas to be uh put into a a single area adjacent uh to the performing arts center. So there will be no change in current conditions.
Um, do, does anybody have any objection to us asking for public comment at this time? Okay, so with that, uh, if any member of the public wishes to comment on this application at this time, would they please raise their hand?
Uh, Ms. Allen, can someone take down the shared screen, please?
That's Patrick.
Thank you.
And. Patrick, can you do the rest of it?
Fortunately, I, my menu has gone away here. Uh, you'll have to bear with me.
Okay, so in the meantime, I'm not seeing any hands raised on this application.
Leaning.
Uh, no, I don't see anybody who wishes to speak. Um, uh, calling out to everybody one more time, if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this application, uh, you could raise your hand. Uh, there is, you'll, I can't tell you where it is on your screen because it's different for different people. But um, there's a hand raise option that you'll see if you click on your name. I believe that's where it comes. Okay, I guess we don't have anybody. So uh, with that, uh, this item is, in fact, a must-close tonight. Uh, does the, or although there is an extension available, does the commission wish to close it at this time? If you would let me know, and to remind you, the seated members are Albin, McRyder, Levy, Yaski, and Hardman.
Close.
Let me take you by order. Mr. McRyder?
Close.
Mr. Levy?
Close.
Mr. Yaski?
Close.
And Mr. Hardman?
Close.
Okay, I will agree with you on closing it, and so with that, we will close this application and go to the regular meeting.
Um, Ms. Ms. Albin, if we could just wait for one second so I can get Mr. Fox, who was recused on that one, if I could get him in?
Yep.
Okay, I've just texted him. Hi, we're we're done with Greenwich Academy. If you, if you want to come on in. He's coming in now. Okay, see you in a second, thanks.
The next item on our agenda is um the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is in regard to the executive orders of the governor under which we are acting at this time. And our next item is to take action to recognize the state order that pertains to the deadlines for planning and zoning applications. Um, I'm waiting for Mr. Fox. Uh, Mr. Yaski, why don't you stay seated for Mr. Fox until he comes in so we can go ahead and do this?
I would be happy to do so.
Okay. Is he in?
I just heard a a bang.
Yeah, unfortunately.
No, I don't see, go ahead, yep.
Okay, so with that, uh, Mr. McRyder, could I please have a motion in regard to the executive order? Mr. McRyder?
Yes, I'm here. Hold on one second, please. Okay, uh.
And. Andy's on. Andy's on.
Okay.
I'm gonna mute. You should mute.
Mike, that, um, um, Nick, that mic on your back doesn't work really well.
Okay.
I'm just gonna mute all for a second, just. So you'll have to unmute yourself, Nick.
Okay, I want to unmute it. Okay, for executive order, uh, seven I.
Mike, my, Mark, if you act, you have to move that mic. Wherever it is, it's banging into something. And and it's almost.
Is that any better?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, pursuant to Governor Ramon's executive order seven I, section nineteen A, as dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Greenwich hereby allocates a ninety-day extension time on all deadlines contained in the covered laws that establish procedural requirements for municipal decisions. Covered laws include all state and municipal laws, special acts, charter revisions, ordinances, or regulations. Executive Order seven one, uh, seven I, section nineteen A. Uh, this basically just reads, it's a suspension or modification, a clarification of certain municipal procedural requirements, uh, timeline, time limitations regarding notice, commitments, commencement, holding of public hearings, decisions. Uh, there's more to that, but it's quite lengthy, and we just entered into the uh.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second for that?
Second, second.
I, um, I was, I'm gonna take Mr. Levy's second on that, Andy, because we actually kind of started it before you came in. Um, Mr. Levy seconds, and Andy, I left, I left Dennis seated on this till you caught up. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick?
Nick, yeah.
You gotta do something with that mic because it just.
Yeah, I'll fix it in a second.
It, the static from it is very loud, and it makes it impossible to hear you or anybody else. Okay, with that, we move on to our next item, which is a request for an extension. This is Thomas Angel, um, and Elizabeth M. Grant, co-executors of the estate of Marie D. Schwartz, to extend the filing period uh, for an application at Seven Dempsey Lane. Does anyone have any comment on this application on the commission? We, do we have the attorney with us here?
Yes, Madam Chair, he's he's bringing back in. Madam Chair, could I just remind you that we need to take a roll call for votes?
I I did. Oh, okay, we were unanimous on the last one, so it was not appropriate.
I uh, I understood that. I just, for the sake of the record, we need to just.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Who's the attorney that is representing this extension?
Mr. Cohen is. He should be back in the room right now.
Mr. Cohen, would you please proceed? Any comments?
Yes, thank, thank you, Ms. Albin. Um, I am representing the estate of Marie D. Schwartz, uh, and this has to do with a. and this has to do with a two-lot subdivision that was approved by the commission at its hearing in January. The ninety-day window to file the Mylar and the Open Station Declaration expires later this month, and because of the conditions, it is possible that we will not be able to have those things filed in time. And rather than come back with a new subdivision application, we're asking under the provisions of the subdivision regulations, specifically 6-279 for a ninety-day extension.
Okay, does anybody on the commission wish to ask any questions or make any comments? No. Does anybody from the public wish to make a comment on this extension? No. Okay, with that, could I have a motion, Mr. McRae?
Seven Dempsey Lane, PLPZ 2019-00483, motion to approve request for extension of time in accordance with Section 6279 of the Town of Greenwich subdivision regulations for an additional ninety days to file a record sheet with the town clerk, noting the following: "All conditions of the original January 7th, 2020 approval shall be continued. The additional ninety-day extension of time would make the new filing date on or before July 27th, 2020."
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Mr. Fox.
That's Mr. Fox's second. All in favor? And I'm going to call you out one by one. Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is a yes. Did I get everybody?
That's four.
Mr. Hardman.
Mr. Hardman, I apologize. Mr. Hardman?
Yes.
And with that, we have passed that resolution. Our next item is number four, and it's John P. Christensen, trustee of the Mary K. Babcock Qualified Personal Residence Trust and the Mary K. Babcock Real Estate Trust, also requesting an extension of the filing period. This is at 11 Wanetta Road. The attorney representing this, Ms. DeLuca?
This one's Mr. Hegney.
Mr. Hegney? Go ahead, Mr. Hegney. Mr. Hegney, would you unmute your mic?
That should do it.
Okay, and then... And you've got your camera on. You're all set, Mr. Hegney. Just go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Could you unlock me and allow me to share the screen? For some reason, that has been locked on me now.
I didn't lock it.
Okay, well, it says I'm unable. All right, hold on.
Okay, maybe Jenny's still there and she can help you because I did not do anything bad to you. If you could make me a co-host. Right now, I'm just in the audience, so I don't have any controls.
Madam Chair, I think we can proceed without it.
Okay, well, there's your handsome self. What a beautiful background you have there.
Yeah, I like that view myself. Good evening, everyone. Tom Hegney for the applicant. This was also a subdivision approved on January 7th of this year. We have completed the maps, which I was going to bring up on the screen, but you don't need those anyway. And we are looking for an extension since the ninety-day period runs out on April 28th. Ninety days would take us to July 27th, which will give us the opportunity to complete the material that was required as part of the approval and have it signed and recorded with the town clerk.
Does anyone on the commission have any comment on this extension?
No.
Any members of the public have a comment on this extension? And hold on, I'm checking for raised hands. Nope, nobody's got any comments. Mr. Low, you're just playing around, right? Yeah, okay. With that, I would take a motion for this extension, Mr. McRae.
Okay, for 11 Wanetta Road, 0 North Horn Road, PLPZ 2019-00415, motion to approve request for an extension of time in accordance with Section 6279 of the Town of Greenwich subdivision regulations for an additional ninety days to file a record sheet with the town clerk, noting the following: "All conditions of the original January 7th, 2020 approval shall be continued. The additional ninety-day extension of time would make the new filing date on or before July 27th, 2020."
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Fox.
That is Mr. Fox seconding. Again, I'm going to take the votes. Mr. Hardman, I'm going to start with you this time. Hardman?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Okay.
Levy?
Aye.
Hold on, did I make a mistake on that, Ms. Fox?
Well, you had said yesterday that I was seated.
Yep, you're correct. I'm sorry, that's Ms. Fox, Ms. Gosse, who was seated on that item for Mr. Fox. I apologize.
So you have to do the second and everything over, so...
Okay.
I'll second. Hardman second.
Is that Mr. Hardman's second? All in favor?
First motion was nothing, and then the motion is now second of Mr. Hardman.
I had forgotten who was seated. The second is from Hardman. The following, I'm requesting your names for the vote. Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Gosse?
Aye.
Hardman?
Aye.
And Albin is aye. Okay, with that, thank you very much, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
With that, we will go to our next item. And before we go to that, I'd like to clarify that this is under a new process that's allowed by the state where before we entertain a formal application, there is an opportunity for a pre-application discussion, and that's what this is. Katie, would you like to make any comment on the legal status of this discussion?
Sure, I would just note that the statute that you were referring to is Connecticut General Statute 7-159B. This is a non-binding discussion on both parties. That has been signed by the Board of Ed. And it is, as you noted, simply a way for the community to give input, for the commission to give input, so that ideally, these applications will come in with addressing the comments that they're going to hear today.
And who will be representing the applicant for this?
That would be... Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead, Russ.
No, it's the lighting on me because...
Yeah, it's Russ Davidson from here.
Okay, let me just read the item out. This item is from the Greenwich Board of Education, and as we said, it's a pre-application review for proposed improvements to Greenwich High School Cardinal Stadium. This is for the bleacher area. And this, as Katie said, is being heard under 7-159B. The address is 10 Hillside Avenue. The person speaking on behalf of the applicant is Russell Davidson. Russell, you are all set to go.
Hi, it's good to see you all. Hope you can hear me and see me okay. I'm Russ Davidson with KG &amp; D Architects, here on behalf of the Greenwich Board of Education. I believe also in the audience is Dr. Donnie Jones, the superintendent, Sean O'Keefe, the chief operating officer, and Daniel Watson, the director of facilities. So we sent you a letter with some background on this process, which I'm sure people had a chance to look at. Been going on for quite some time, and it's sort of a good point to be here at the beginning of the approvals process. So there is widespread consensus that the first thing that needs to happen is that the home side bleachers need to be replaced with the related work in that portion of the site. There is less overall consensus on the second phase of the project, which includes the relocation of the tennis courts, the construction of a connecting driveway to the high school parking lot, and related work with the visitors' bleachers and a visitors' team room building on the sort of north side of the campus. So the goal tonight was to just review with you the overall concept and then talk about how we can proceed with the Phase 1, which is a drawing concept plan. I don't know if Patrick can put that up there now or not. So the key aspect here is this blue line that divides the project into two parts. The Board of Education wants to pursue moving ahead with Part 1 and continue to discuss Part 2. But at this point, Part 2 is not funded, and there's a lot more discussion that has to take place. So Part 1 is everything to the left side of that blue line, with the exception of the track and field. The track and field is not being altered in either phase. So the work proposed in Part 1 is replacement of the home side bleachers, a new press box, buildings underneath the bleachers for public toilet rooms, storage, and the home side team room, as well as space for referees, a small ticket booth and kiosk near the pedestrian entrance to the building, and then handicap parking and a little bit of general parking that is accessed from the existing curb cut off Putnam Avenue. There'll also be some improvements to the driveway behind the bleachers that will be used for food trucks and emergency vehicles and deliveries to the space behind the bleachers. In Phase 1, the tennis courts will remain where they are. There will not be a connecting drive through to the rear parking lot. And it's thought that parking lot is important for... Provides all of the handicap parking required for the full bleacher set. So in Phase 2, what's proposed is to relocate all eight tennis courts, continue the driveway from the parking lot to connect to the rear parking lot of the high school, build a bridge over the creek, create a small practice area where one of the tennis courts is now located, construct a second building for the visitor's side team building, which will be either in the location that is dashed in there or perhaps under the visitors' bleachers. That is still to be determined. And then also replace the visitors' bleachers. So those are the two parts of the plan. Everybody on the Board of Ed's side likes the entire plan, but they really do want to pursue it in two parts. And that's important for them to gain support for the plan and also to shorten the timeline so that the home side bleachers, which are in very poor condition and are currently not usable without boring in place, are replaced as soon as possible. So that's basically the overview. You know, and Katie mentioned this process of the sketch plan review. So we wanted to show you the whole plan, and then we wanted to pursue approval for Phase 1 through the planning and zoning process. We will need a zoning change to deal with FAR and the height of the elevator, as well as obviously the municipal improvement from the Board of Selectment.
Do I have any questions from the commissioners? And I think it would help if you identified yourselves before you speak or as you begin speaking.
Yes, Nick McRae here. There's no access from the back parking lot through the site out to the existing curb cut. And we know that we're going to be having a lot of construction at the hillside post-road intersection. Have you discussed or talked about what the condition of and how that existing curb cut is going to be designed in such a way to keep it safe, seeing it's so close to the traffic light at overlook and that this is going to be probably one of the heavily, most heavily used exits from the site?
Are you talking about during construction or once it's complete?
Once it's complete, during construction and once it's complete. I guess during construction, the connection's Phase 2. So I would be concerned as, you know, in Phase 1, how is it being constructed? How is it being designed? Is it going to be right-hand turn out only? Right-hand turn in only? Is it going to be divided so people can't, you know, cut across the five lanes of traffic that are there? Has that been looked at in any kind of detail?
All good questions and things that have been discussed quite a bit. So the civil engineer for the project as part of our team is Fussin O'Neill. Fussin O'Neill has also been commissioned by the school district to do a traffic study. They do the traffic studies that update on the MISA complex. This access point has always been discussed as right turn in and right turn out. It is an existing curb cut right now, and in Phase 1, there is no proposed changes to that curb cut. In Phase 2, after speaking with Connecticut DOT, it's quite likely there will be some proposed changes to that curb cut to divide it to sort of force the right hand in and right hand out only.
Okay, but that's not going to be... It's not going to be constructed as part of Phase 1?
That's not currently the plan, no.
Okay. The new driveway that's behind the bleachers is for food trucks. It seems to me that you've got ADA spaces that are out far away from the bleachers. The bleachers are being redesigned for accessibility. Why would you prioritize food trucks behind the stands as opposed to accessible parking spaces?
Again, that's been discussed quite a bit, including the committee that reviewed this plan, included ADA advocates from the town. The reason the handicapped spaces are being provided where they're shown now is because it allows handicapped people to park, get out the front of their cars onto a sidewalk, and proceed towards handicapped accessible seating without ever crossing a lane of traffic. It's very difficult to get full-size handicap spaces behind the bleachers. And in order to do that properly, it would require them to then cross the lane of traffic to get to the back of the bleachers, whereas the ramps are really on the ends. And we thought there was too many conflicts between pedestrians and traffic and people potentially in wheelchairs to make that an appropriate parking area, mostly because of lack of space. But also, a good portion of these handicapped spaces will eventually be serving the accessible visitors. So one combined lot was preferred by the committee who recommended this to the board.
Okay. From what we were talking about yesterday at the briefing, I guess most of your wetlands issues are a part of Phase 2. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're all part of Phase 2, and that was reviewed with Pat Sesto. And that is also one of the reasons to divide this into two parts.
Okay. The... I guess in terms of priorities, I guess the first thing I'm looking for is actually looking at a rezoning that I'm sure is either coming or have already been submitted. You need a variance for the elevator overrun. I think one of the things that came up yesterday in the brief, I'm not too sure if you heard, was to verify the... I guess this is the side yard setback along the post road to make sure that it's met in terms of an R20. to make sure that the, it's met in terms of an R20. And I guess this, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we did see a bunch of emails about that this morning, and, and it does meet the side yard setback. And I don't know, Pat, if you can zoom in on that area up there that says Part One. But there's actually a light red line there that is the setback. If you see the dash line that sort of runs down the middle of the drive lane.
Yes, I see it.
That is the required setback line for side yard in the R20. And you can see that the bleachers and the buildings are all clear of that. So what's actually happening with the bleachers moving forward is you're going from a non-conforming side yard to a conforming side yard.
Great.
Nick, can I just comment on that quickly? Because I did reach out to Jody Kuchar, the zoning enforcement officer, and asked him the question, this, this question about the variance, and he said, the, there was a, he said the variance for the original stands called it a side yard. So if the stands comply with the 27.5 foot setback for the R20, they would not need a variance.
And that's what that red line is at, that's the.
Oh, so it's well forward of that, of that line then, right?
The, the bleachers are at 31 or the back of the press box, and the buildings are at 37.
Great.
Away from the property line.
Correct.
Okay, so, so it would not need a variance.
Correct. The elevator height is unavoidable in order to get the, a full-size elevator up to the press box and the height of the press box. But it's, you know, it's just a condition of the size, but when you look at the, the height with, relative to the edge of the road above, there's such a steep bank there that we don't really think that the height presents a difficulty. It's, it's really still fits into the context of the topography.
And the elevator is actually, is part of your accessibility compliance?
It is. You're, you're, once your press box gets to be the size that this one is proposed to be, it needs to be handicapped accessible. And because of the overall height, the most appropriate type of elevator is a full-sized hydraulic elevator. So that's what's being proposed, which can also be used to get disabled people to seats near the top of the bleachers.
Okay. In terms of just, just months, not dates, what is the estimated schedule like?
Well, it all hinges on how approvals are taking place, but there's still some hope that bleacher companies are still telling us they can produce these bleachers and have them installed by mid-September if we can get the approvals in place.
Okay. Is the site served by public sewer already?
Yes.
Great. Okay, that's all I have for, at the moment. Thank you.
I would just like to clarify that the height of the structure that we're building is the, the, the building is a one-story building that's going to be constructed underneath the bleachers?
Correct.
And what is the, the height of the, is, is, the bleachers can be any higher than the existing bleachers?
Yes.
How much higher, just?
Well, we don't have real good, accurate drawings of the existing ones, but I'm, I'm thinking it's about 10 feet higher for two reasons. There's, they're a little bit taller in terms of number of rows, and that is necessary to maintain the seating count. It is not an increase in seating. But one of the things that is not changing is the location of the light poles for a number of reasons. So we need to make room for handicap ramps on both sides of the bleachers so that squeezes the bleachers in a little bit and, and adds rows at the top. But the biggest reason that they're getting taller is because you have an elevated walkway in the front of the bleachers so that the first row of seating is well above the track level, which is going to greatly improve sightlines and provides for handicap access across the front of the elevated bleachers as well as little cutouts for wheelchair seating at that location.
I should have said Peter Levy, this is Peter Levy. And, and what is that elevation of the front row?
It's about four feet.
About four feet. And so it's about 10 feet higher and the, so the elevator bulkhead will be, how much higher than that?
I think that the total variance needed is around 11 feet for the elevator.
And so, and what, how, what is the elevation of the top of the of the structure and the, that eastern edge of of Putnam Avenue that it?
Yeah, I don't have those right off the top of my head. I, I believe they're, they're roughly equivalent. Obviously, Putnam Avenue, you know, rises pretty steeply there as it goes west. So it varies along the length of the bleachers, but we, we can get to site sections that show that accurately.
Okay, well, thank you.
How, how are you dealing with the drainage for the increased footprint as well as the increased parking area?
Fussin O'Neil, Fussin O'Neil has designed storm drainage, and we have a complete storm drainage report. So it is subsurface treatment and detention in the area of the parking lot and, and the bleachers. And that's going to be shown in detail on our Phase One drawings.
And that drainage didn't have to go through wetlands because of proximity of this new parking?
No, it does not.
And then why can't you continue this road as part of Phase One?
That's, um, there's a number of reasons. A number of people really want to focus on the priority of getting the home side of this field approved as quickly as possible. And the belief is discussion of continuing the road and the other work in the wetlands buffer will delay that a year or more. The, the continuation of that driveway is controversial. We have heard from groups of people who are strongly in favor of it from a traffic easing and emergency egress point of view and others who are opposed to it. So it's, it's an attempt to, you know, get an improvement underway and take a little bit more time to look at the aspects of the project that are a little bit more controversial and challenging from an approvals point of view.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? Isn't, is it true, Russ, that the curb cut and the configuration of that area has to be done at this stage as if you were going to do the entire Phase Two?
I don't believe it does.
So will, so will it not be the same configured? What, what is proposed in Phase One that would need to be changed in Phase Two with respect to the, the curb cut area?
Well, there's only been some preliminary studies done on that, Katie, and talking with the folks at Fussin O'Neil. You know, normally when you have a right turn in and right turn out, you want to divide the traffic and you want to insert an island, which, which they describe as a pork chop island, which I think is pretty descriptive. So it sort of forces you to make a right turn out. That may be the right thing to do, but that's going to require a little bit more discussion with them and with the, the state to see what they're going to accept.
And that would be, that would be done prior to you submitting the final site plan? Or what is the, what is the timing for that driveway?
Be done as part of Phase Two.
But the, so how would you get into the parking lot that's proposed as Phase One?
The, leaving the existing access point just the way it is, which is the way it's drawn here.
Would it, oh, oh, wow, okay.
So, so my, my, I'd love to hear from the neighbors pretty soon. My point, Phase One is not replacing the existing. It's expanding by adding food trucks, it's adding a whole new parking, it's adding an elevator, which personally, I think, is expanding and Phase Two should be part of the discussion. Concern is, what happens if Phase Two doesn't go forward? We've intensified the Phase One, and we're making a difficult driveway in opinion than what it's because we're in, we're basically creating ADA parking spaces, more parking food trucks that currently really isn't allowed right now.
Mr. Fox, we've lost you. I think you're speaking and you've gone silent on us. So I, I think where he was heading with this, Ms. Alvin, is that, is that right now it's for emergency access only. And when you start adding food trucks and, you know, cars with, for people that want to park in the handicap parking lot, etc., that's going to require, you would think, a reconfiguration of the, of the existing condition, which is quite tight.
Well, I mean.
You can't, you can't get two-way traffic down, down that ramp right now, as an example, to get to the back.
Well, let me be clear. The curb cut is not changing. Once you're inside it, there's a lot of changes.
Okay.
So the driveway down to behind the bleachers is absolutely being widened.
Okay.
It's the curb cut that is not changing. And, you know, one of the reasons we do these preliminaries is, as we've talked about, Katie, is if, if it's the commission's feeling that we need to address the ultimate configuration of that curb cut as if Phase Two was going to be done, we can add that to the scope of Phase One.
I see. Okay, good, good.
That's exactly why we're here.
Mr. Davis.
Hold on a second, Mr. McRae. To go back to what Mr. Fox was saying, though, there is a possibility that we would want you to rethink Phase One, the pieces of Phase One and Phase Two, because I will know more when we hear from neighbors and the public, but there are enough concerns about traffic and flow and the impact on the neighborhood that I believe your Phase One would have to address how you impact the surrounding community in anything you do. And to mitigate that impact would be a beginning of it. So that, we have, that's one of the things I would strongly suggest you think through is how you impact the community. But I, my guess is, we've got enough people at this meeting tonight that you're going to get some good thought on that, on what that would require, what that takes. Go ahead, you guys. Mr. McRae, you were going to say something, go ahead.
Right. Mr. Davis, and I was thinking as part of that suggestion of actually including the revised curb cut with, curb cut with the island in it. I think my concern on that, if we don't do it now, is that when we're looking at Part Two, say, a year from now or whatever, that, that comes off the table and it's not part of it. It would seem to me, actually, if we're going to do a reconfiguration of that whole area inside the property line, let's talk about what's happening at that curb cut now and have that instituted. Just so it doesn't get forgotten as we move forward.
So we can, we can do that. I understand the concern.
Peter Lowe. Recognizing the interest of those advocating upgrades to the the home bleachers and the immediate surrounding area and weighed against, expressed neighbors' concerns about the traffic and congestion along Hillside and the desirability of another access or egress. How do you all feel about how those two balance out? And I wonder if you could comment on how you came to splitting off or postponing addressing those congestion and parking and traffic issues to Phase Two?
Well, the reason it was divided was to, to, you know, there was a, a strong constituency, including people who want to donate to this project who didn't want to see the replacement of the home side bleachers burdened with the discussion of a driveway and relocation of tennis courts. So there was a lengthy discussion about then, what must you do if you're going to replace the bleachers? Consensus grew about this concept of putting the buildings under the bleachers and that if you're going to do that, you need to provide handicap parking. And you need to provide it in a way that is safe, and that's where this location came up. And you need to provide it so that you provide all of the handicap parking that's needed rather than relying on some of the handicap spaces that are in the general high school lot. So that was a process where a number of options were looked at in the December, January timeframe, and, and the committee selected this approach to be pursued in one or two phases, and the Board of Education chose to pursue it in two phases.
I know when you submit, you submitted your municipal improvement to the Board of Selectment, but that's just for Phase One, right? And then the idea is that you'd submit at a later date for Phase Two?
Correct.
Just picking up where Mr. Lowe had brought up a point. It's, it's interesting to me. Part One, Part Two, when both are complete, we now have another driveway entering and exiting the campus. I'm, I'm finding actually that I'm not too sure if this is going to help traffic because it's a driveway that terminates a few feet from a, a traffic signal and provides entrance onto the post road in only one direction. I, I don't, am I going to get, you know, you know, a quarter of the percentage of all the vehicles leaving because it's only going in one direction? And would that be setting up a situation where somebody's leaving, they're heading westbound and trying to make a U-turn? Or, you know, doing something, you know, that's not appropriate on the street there? You know, I'm kind of finding this a little interesting as a solution to traffic problems as opposed to looking at the real traffic problems that we do have on Hillside. I don't know if any of the commissioners have a thought on that as well.
No, again, I think we need to have this be, we, we, it's hard for us to break up Part One and Part Two because it is one big site. They're going for rezoning on the one site to allow the added FAR. And as everybody knows and will hear in a minute, the traffic on Hillside is, is a problem. And I want to make sure that Phase One doesn't exacerbate traffic.
I don't, it's interesting. I, I don't think, I don't think the Part One will. I think actually if you have Part Two and there's a new driveway, you know, it may help, but I think it, it's not going to help to the extent that everybody's assuming. Because I believe if we're talking about a split end at the post road, you know, there's just a small number of cars that are be able to go out this at one time. And that actually, there's a number of small cars, actually, have to be in the parking lot already for, you know, to pick up and drop off. And I think as you, for Andy, as what you're saying, if this is going to be a part of pick up and drop off, it'd be best to see what's, how that's going to happen off the parking lot in the back and how you get to access to this and going out, going out to post road. I mean, how does that drop off and pick up loop in the back work? Understanding that when this thing is built?
That's a very good point. I mean, if, if there's a, a plan about, you know, dropping off, say, the ninth graders in the morning from, you know, in, in the back, you know, uh, maybe this is a way of starting to understand how this, uh, roadway will really work. Because there's, although it's two-way traffic, you're really going to have traffic in coming in the morning and traffic going out in the afternoon after school. So that is a, a way of understanding how, um, the organizationally, how this will work. But it's, um, uh, it's a lot to piece together because you're creating a new traffic pattern here. And, um, I think that it, it should be better understood if, if that's the intent.
Uh, how would you guys feel if we turn to the public for comment now? We've got two hands that are all-
Russ, how are we dealing with buses under this plan? Team buses?
There's a drop-off area proposed in phase two, so the teams can be dropped off and picked up closer to the field.
Um, so how are they doing it in phase one?
They'll do it the way they do now. They drop off at the school and the teams walk out. There's a pedestrian pathway to the field that'll be retained in phase one. And they just go into the back, back high school parking lot and they drop off there and teams walk out to the field.
Uh, I, how would you, uh, the commission feel about getting some public comment at this point?
Um, I have one more question.
Okay.
Was there any study, uh, as to, uh, reconfiguring or moving that, that, uh, that existing curb cut so it aligns with overlook? Raising the grade out there? I mean, any kind of specific detail or hard detail? I mean, as, 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 as part of the phase one, it would seem if this is really going to be a, a, a solution or wants to be a solution to any kind of a traffic issue, that, um, if it comes out to that, that signal, signal and aligns with overlook, it'd be a lot safer and probably work much better than anticipated. Um, and I, I, I think if you, if you haven't looked at it, it will be something to look at in detail. And if you have looked at it, can we be provided with the information that proves that it, it's not feasible at all? Thank you.
Uh, everybody agrees that that would be better. Um, the topography, uh, doesn't come close to working. Um, that intersection at overlook is right at the edge of the bleachers. It would require something like an elevated, um, highway exit ramp that would come out in order to make a turning radius, literally overhanging the edge of the track. So we can give you a site section that shows you that. Uh, but DPW has independently looked at it. And, um, it's just not viable from a topography point of view without moving the field.
Great, thank you very much.
And you're going to get some questions about that, I believe. Okay, so everybody good now, now public comment or one more question?
One, one last question I have, Peter Lowe.
I think this is going to inform, I think the public comment is going to, uh, inform the rest of our questions. So that's why I'm pushing a little bit for it. Go ahead, Peter Lowe.
Uh, once the access on the post road has been upgraded to accommodate non-emergency vehicles, what is the anticipated, uh, volume of traffic from students, uh, going in and being dropped off or picked up, uh, in, in, behind the school? Notwithstanding, I know it's just a walking bridge, but up to that bridge.
Um, I would, I would have to talk to Fuss and O'Neill about their traffic study, um, to get you some numbers on that.
Well, it's one of the things we're going to talk to you about in a little bit is the Fuss and O'Neill study. But I kind of want to hear what the public, you know, what people say, um, to focus our thinking and our comments to you on it. Okay, has everybody had a chance to ask what they wanted to ask for now? Okay, so hearing silence, I'm going to assume yes. Um, we're now going to go to the public for comment. Uh, the first person who has their hand raised is Mr. Paul Colligan. That's C.O.L.L.I.G.A.N. Um, Mr. Colligan, I have turned on your mic.
Madam Chair, he is on phone number eight nine eight seven. Would you like me to open that up?
I, um, I'm seeing him online.
He, uh, he wrote in, uh, while we were discussing and said that he, he's, he's only listening, um, by a phone.
Good. Okay, so why don't you go ahead and open up his phone and I'll disable the email?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, this is Paul. Um, for those of you who do not know me, I know Mr. Fox does. I'm a father of three student athletes that have gone through the high school. Uh, twenty varsity seasons. The last one, uh, probably is going to be canceled this spring with the boys lacrosse. The question I have is with, with such a major project, and again, this may be directed at Mr. Davidson, I'm not sure. Why was it not considered that the soccer field dimensions would become regulation on this project? Because the football field is fine. The soccer field is between ten and twenty yards more narrow than regulation.
Okay, um, we've got your question. You're asking about making the soccer field regulation, um, as long as they're at it. Uh, did you have anything else that you wanted to ask? And then we're going to gather some questions and we're going to let Mr. Davidson answer them, okay?
Sure, just one, one follow-up as it relates to the field. It would also, uh, be of interest to the track team to have a, a uniformed track. I think that there is at least one, if not two lanes, missing on the high school track, which prohibits them from hosting any, uh, you know, conference or state tournament.
Okay, and you know-
I don't have track players, just soccer and lacrosse.
Okeydoke. Thank you very much, Mr. Colligan.
Thanks, Ms. Alvin.
Okay, um, our next person is Steph Cowie. Um, Steph Cowie, that's C.O.L.L.I.E. Um, Steph, go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Alvin. This is Steph Cowie. I am a, um, member of the First Selectmen Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. And Russ was mentioning, um, the input that, uh, for ADA parking and how that was really determined. But I didn't know if anyone had any questions regarding further reasons as to why it wouldn't be placed behind the bleachers. Um, just in terms of, um, feasibility, uh, safety purposes. I didn't know if anyone had any questions.
Okay, please share. Um, so did you want to share some insight with us on that?
Yeah, so, um, obviously if it were in part one, when you're looking behind the bleachers, there have been several iterations of, um, what we consider to be several different, uh, you know, exhibits. And they originally had parking that would be going behind, as it's noted in the K G N D, that it would be placed parallel. There is, there is concern, obviously, with anyone of any type of handicap, um, specifically someone in a wheelchair, difficulty drive, you know, walking with a walker, um, sight even, that they would be entering an active drive. And what I mean by that is cars would be coming in and out of there, looking for parking spaces. There would also be pedestrians that would inadvertently be back there, um, that would also be of concern. Obviously, when you're putting cars, uh, cars in the place of where people are walking, it is a very dangerous, um, situation. So the thought to move it to what used to be, and I think Russ, um, stated that, what used to be a, a parking lot back then, that is why it was looked upon as being a really great opportunity to have safety really built into that, that anyone getting out of their vehicle would be entering to a curbside. If someone has a ramp of any kind, it's not coming out into active driveway. So that is what, really what the purpose was. My concern with some of the questions are to wait on the phase two of the, the driveway. And you're talking about the entrance point onto the post road. Um, my concern would be that you would then exclude the ADA parking that is truly not a nice to have. It is actually a law to have. So, um, that would be my concern from that standpoint. And I would be happy to answer any questions to Russ's point. There were several discussions about this. And there were also several discussions with, um, public comment as well. I believe that Mr. McRae then, um, asked about, um, bringing the road parallel and to out, exit out of, um, overlook. Obviously, neighbors did come out in full force with that, that they do not want that to happen and that they felt more comfortable with the right in, right out, as Russ was describing.
Yeah, I, I think that we had a, we have had a concern when we talked about it yesterday about what that driveway access is going to do to the traffic on the post road. And that's even with the right in, right out.
Right.
That is a very bad intersection in the peak times for the high school.
Um, could I just interject quickly that I think a comment was made that the, it is not feasible to align with overlook, and I believe that DPW believes that it is feasible. I'm basing this on a comment that had, um, been written by DPW way back in, um, uh, the end of March on, on the thirty-first. So, um, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put that out there that I don't, I don't think that there's been a conclusion one way or another.
Okay. All right. Um, uh, Ms. Cowie, do you have any other comments?
No, I do not unless anyone else has any further, um, questions.
Okay, uh, the next, um, person that, um, wishes to speak is Chris Legano. Hold on, Mr. Legano. Your mic is on now, Mr. Legano. Go ahead. Mr. Legano?
Uh, how about now? Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Great, great. Thank you so much, um, for allowing me to, um, to comment on this. I just want to say, um, again, my name is Chris Legano. Um, I live, um, across from the high school here in Millbrook. And I'm also a, a member of the Millbrook Homeowners Association. Um, and, you know, we are fully in support of part one of this project, um, for the high school. Uh, but we have, uh, just a few concerns with part two. Um, and we understand that this is all very preliminary at this point. But with respect to part two or phase two, um, just some of the comments that we've received are number one, when, um, if, and when construction with phase two does happen with respect to that river or that water course there, um, I believe that makes its way, you know, through the high school campus under the post road into the lakes here in Millbrook. Um, so there's been some concerns raised about, um, about runoff and sediment and contaminants flowing into the Millbrook Lakes and whether there'll be any, um, any impacts there. And then the other, um, the other questions or concerns we're getting from the residents here, again, has to do with, um, with that, uh, um, that new proposed, um, entrance or exit there. Um, and like Mr. McRae was saying, whether if it's a right turn only onto the post road, you know, will cars then be trying to immediately make U-turns, um, right at the overlook, uh, traffic light? Uh, or turn into overlook? I'm sorry, uh, or turn into overlook and then try to make a U-turn there and go back the other way? So again, we just have, um, some questions or concerns about that whole entrance, the new proposed entrance, uh, and exit down the post road. Um, and that's on behalf of the Millbrook Association. And again, thank you very much for allowing me to, um, to, to put some input in.
Thank you very much. Uh, does anyone else from the public wish to speak at this time? Please raise your hand. I've got no hands. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? No. Okay, so Mr. Davidson, I-
Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there's some questions coming in and on the Q and As.
Yeah, I've been getting most of them. Hold on.
Uh, Mr. Gunsberg, I believe, uh, had a follow-up to Ms. Cowie's point. Um, I don't know if he would like to speak to it or, uh, just have it read into the record.
Yes, he says the stadium is required to have ADA compliant bleachers, bathrooms and parking, and that he agrees with Ms. Cowie's points.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gunsberg. I think you can hear us, so thank you very much. Uh, but I'd like, so I-
Mrs. Dempsey also is trying to speak. She's, uh, apparently her, her hand raising function is not registering.
Oh, that was good, so, um-
Oh, I see her now. Okay.
Can you go ahead and enable her?
I'm going to, Mrs. Dempsey, I'm going to allow you to talk in a second. Go ahead. Can you hear me, Mrs. Dempsey?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Listen, um, I'll be brief because I sent in my comments by, um, by email. Um, and I, I'm Elizabeth Dempsey, twenty-one Hillside Road, um, across from the high school. Um, and, um, I'm speaking for a lot of our neighbors who very quickly put together comments on this. Um, and we just wanted to address the board in general and say, look, we, um, obviously are, we're very interested in reducing, um, the problems that we live with, um, on Hillside Road. Um, and it would make things much better for the traffic and our daily living. Um, but we, um, we also have a significant amount of parents that have been concerned about safety. And, um, uh, I participated on the committee, um, the Hillside Traffic and Parking Committee with the school officials. And I have to say, everyone is dynamite. They have worked so hard to try to work out the snafus that started with, um, the school start change, um, and the piling of cars. Um, I will say to some of Mr. McRae's point that any relief with a right turn in, right turn out, um, change would be so helpful, even if it was under careful instructions and thought out, uh, well. Because, um, it is highly unusual. We have one of the biggest high schools in the, in the state. And with a single form of egress, like, uh, being Hillside Road, I, I can't tell you, um, how, how unusual that is. And I, I neglected about a half a page of summary of the issues that we face on a daily basis, despite the hard work and all the traffic studies, um, uh, and deliberation that the town has done. I think if we involved, um, Tom Bukowski and, uh, DPW, they really have thought this through. Um, and everyone would really be excited about having that second access point. Um, there is a left turn lane, um, uh, so that I don't believe anyone would want to do a U-turn. Um, that's, that's just my opinion. Um, and the second thing is, um, we totally recognize the pressure that the Board of Ed, from a funding perspective, is looking at. And they listen, and this town listens to the athletic voices. Uh, uh, my husband and I are parents of two student athletes. We understand that pressure and, and we ourselves want this school to be amazing, um, and to be a real draw. But, um, you have to look at it in its entirety. If you now consider the traffic that's going to happen with Greenwich Country Day putting, um, their athletic complex, um, uh, into the fields, uh, off of Fairfield. Fairfield, the traffic study said it's going to be pretty incredible, the increase in traffic. So I, I would like to, I really would like to see if there's a way that, that we can incorporate, um, a second form of egress. Uh, we realize that the stadium needs to, the, the bleachers need to get up, um, and going and, and not be held back by wetlands considerations. Um, but this is a single shot in a fifty-year-old, year history of immense problems that we have faced. And I would just, I, I really would love to see there be a way for a simultaneous start, uh, for a second form of egress.
Okay, um, does any-
Sorry. Can I, can I just know, um, one other thing, please, that there were, uh, several comments that came in over email. And Mr. LaRoe, could you speak to where you put those on the town website? Just so if people want to take a look at them, you can see the other public comments that came in?
Uh, yes, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has a webpage now for virtual meetings. And we have added the links that are included in the final agenda. But, um, separately on that webpage, uh, we've also added another link, uh, as of this morning for information that's come in as of today. One of those links is a folder to neighbor, uh, letters from, uh, residents, I should say, that have come in. One of those links is a folder to neighbor uh letters from uh residents, I should say, that have come in uh mostly this afternoon and up until five o'clock, so uh anything that's was submitted prior to four thirty, quarter to five is in there, anything that's been received since will go in there post the meeting, and then will become part of the record uh after the fact.
Okay, we have uh one more person who wishes uh to speak, he is um on the phone, I believe. Mr. Fulton, can you hear me? Richard Fulton?
Well, we have, we have, um yeah.
Mr. Fulton? Okay, not having any luck with him, let me read out the question from him. Many residents are concerned that the away bleachers will be delayed by being a part of Phase Two. Can we please discuss including their replacement as part of Phase One? The culvert replacement at the intersection of Hillside and Route One is scheduled for twenty twenty-two and is a multi-year project. Wow. This could delay the start of Phase Two to twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. I'm not having any luck with um uh hearing him, but that is the question he sent in. Uh do I have anyone else who wishes to ask a question?
Madam Chair, you have uh Mrs. Ashley Cole has raised her hand in the room.
Uh okay. Hold on just a sec. Ashley Cole, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everybody, good evening.
This, the record is Ashley Cole?
Yes, I am a resident at eleven Hillside Road, and I've lived there for almost twenty years. And over the past twenty years, we've seen significant uh changes in our traffic and safety, and I have been a member of the Hillside Road Safety Commission along with Mrs. Dempsey, who spoke previously. And we just want to raise our concerns that the egress, and I agree with Mr. uh McCree that this might be, you know, not the best design, but it's what we've got right now, but Hillside Road needs relief uh from this traffic uh nightmare that we're having right now. It's been documented, we've had a traffic study. The Chief of Police agrees with us that we need another egress, so does uh Tom Babkowski, who is the Safety and Security Officer at Greenwich High School. This is actually one of the more important issues of this Cardinal Stadium plan. The safety, security of an entire neighborhood and all the students, and really all the citizens of Greenwich here is at stake. I know my safety is uh, you know, somewhat compromised because of our issues on Hillside Road. And so I want to insist that the funding for this project be wrapped up together and that the road be addressed and looked at, we really need this.
Yeah, Ms. Cole, we spent some time yesterday discussing um that updated traffic study from the fall of twenty nineteen with the concern about the very poor performance of the Hillside Route One intersection as well as the Hillside Fairfield intersection at peak hours. And I believe that the whole commission shared your view, somebody kick me if I'm lying, that that really needs to be addressed, and that's what we said to Mr. Davidson when he began, that this is a concern and that we need to think about how adding that second driveway is going to impact the performance of Route One in the long term, understanding that we may want to do it sooner rather than later for other reasons. But uh the commission, I believe, agreed with you wholeheartedly yesterday.
Good, glad to hear.
Ms. Cole, anything you would like to add?
Uh no, I just want to thank everybody for their service here. You play an important role in our town, and I can't uh stress enough again how this second egress, which to some people might not be important, but it it really is one of the most important facets of this entire plan, and I think we need to emphasize that.
Uh Ms. Cole, before you uh step away, a quick question. As a long-term resident of Hillside, is is the traffic congestion and issues that we're seeing on Hillside a relatively recent phenomenon, or has it always been there since you've moved in?
Well, it's it's always been there, it's just it's gotten worse. We've had a redesign, once certainly once the the start times changed um for the high school. You know, that put the start time for the high school in with uh, you know, rush hour traffic and also traffic going to all the other schools and businesses in town. So it was, it's like surge, surge of traffic. Then we had a redesign two years ago of the road, which made the northbound lane on Hillside incredibly dangerous to try to accommodate all the cars. There is, that left us without any um room for error. And we're talking, you know, teenage drivers, harried parrots, huge school buses. It's a dangerous situation, and I've almost been hit several times. And, you know, I've been very patient and about this whole process, but you know, it's it's pretty unnerving to live on this road right now. A Hillside Road has, you know, we've always known that there were issues now. In the past, if you look at past planning and zoning documents, it's always mentioned. And a Hillside Road traffic study was actually supposed to have been done almost ten years ago, and we just insisted that it was, that it be done, and we just recently finished that, and that was something that was uh supposed to be in addressed ages ago. So we've had a long-term problem here. And it's it's basically a design flaw. You know, there are no schools of this size in America that only have one egress. What does that tell you? And we've got um, you know, a new America right now, we've got some dangerous security issues. There needs to be another egress for this.
Okay. And we have to, and but I, we have to understand what the traffic impact is of this egress as well.
Yeah.
That's critical. And you raised something else, which is, uh you, I I, as I recall, you had made comments previously about that traffic study, but there's a lot of disorder on Hillside and what happens on Hillside.
And and Ms. Dempsey has has just added in under the Q and A that the traffic has gotten worse because more students don't want to take the bus. Parents want or need to pick up and drop off, now have Ubers in all of our driveways, buses even have dropped students in the middle of the street because the backup is so bad.
Yep, that's true, that's a fact.
What, I have a quick question. In light of that, and this new stadium is primarily for after-school and on the weekends, what kind of security barrier are you putting at this entrance? Because right now, parents are double parking in this to pick up students, drop off. I'm I'm very concerned that we're making this even more of an issue in Phase One for uh those type of Uber drivers, parents, and I think you need to address being able to block this off except on uh when the stadium's being used.
That's a good point, because even if even if the roadway is constructed, you know, during Phase Two, presumably with the Uber issue, people will want to drop off there because it's human nature in the shortest distance between two points, so is it, is it um sized accordingly for that and, you know?
Yeah.
To your point.
And then the other thing is, I think you should show the pedestrian pathways because there are a lot of students that go up the post road and across to Millbrook um via this pathway, and we don't want cars crossing that pathway.
Good point, Mr. Mr. Fox. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Anybody want to raise a hand? Patrick, I don't know what happened to my screen share right now, it has this big black thing in it, is that you?
There is one in the in the Q and A, there's two in the Q and A.
Okay. Hold on a second, Q and A. Uh we got Ms. Dempsey, she, the second form of, so those were um two questions from uh Ms. Dempsey. Uh one was that the traffic has gotten worse, and the other one was uh the the benefits of the second form of egress. Uh where queuing be on campus versus not not going on Hillside. If we don't have anybody else from the public, this might be a good time to could wait, yep, that's another, yep, okay.
We can eat now, my speaking's done.
Did Ms. Dempsey just come back in?
No, that was Ms. Cole.
Okay, should we bring Ms. Dempsey, do you want to come back in? Ms. Dempsey?
We need to, we need to unmute her.
I did.
Oh, okay, sure, listen, I don't want to take any more of your time, I didn't know if Mr. Davidson was there and could address um his views on the benefits of of that full form of egress, you know, stretching to the parking lot. Uh one of the things that we talked a little bit about in uh in the um the Parking and Traffic uh Committee that we had for Hillside with all the town officials was just that, for example, queuing could be done um along that big stretch for the end of the day, which would relieve a lot of, I think it would be um it could help the problem on East Putnam, the queuing that's done there and the queuing that's done um already on Hillside, so you're essentially elongating the path for parents. And the other thing I would say is, I mean, so the the school, town officials can, and I'm sure Katie knows as well, there's there's been so much thought and planning, Fosson O'Neil and others, who put together the plan when when MISA was done about um traffic going, parents going back to pick up their kids and behind the school, and that there would be a queue line, and it takes long enough that they won't enter it. And um so it doesn't really end up, all the work that's been done doesn't end up being utilized and as much as they've worked so hard on that. So to have that second form of egress would allow parents that are going up up on um East Putnam, it would allow them a a much faster exit, um and it would get all the traffic back to where it needs to be. You know, in terms of following the plan in the back of the school. I would add that, and then the second part is, I personally would think that that everyone would be going, why don't we have this in place when you've got years of rebuilding this bridge at the base of Hillside? You're only going to have um one, one e, one lane going one way and one lane going the other. So you really need to think of it, not that this is a quick, a quick process to put this in, but boy, is that going to help. And I just, I don't know if I had finished my thoughts, just a fi, another final random thought was just that there were several parents in our neighborhood who were really upset, and so was the school, when there have been lockdowns, and that is part of the new reality that parents were all wanting to come to the school, but all the roads were closed, it was even a problem for, it was a problem for the school, and this really needs to be addressed, and I think it would look, it would be a big concern if if a second form of egress wasn't put in when parents have publicly stated their concern about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mr. Collagen has written in an ad, and the question he had previously that he would like to get discussed is the size of the track not being regulation size, and if we're going to be doing big changes to the stadium, would this not be a good time to make that improvement?
Yes, that was the same question that he raised when he spoke.
Yeah.
We were waiting to ask Mr. Davidson about that till everybody had had a chance, but I'm not seeing, let me look. I'm not seeing anybody right now that wants to speak, so we could put Mr. Davidson back on the hot spot.
Mrs. Albon, before we move on, I I want to know if if Mrs. Dempsey's still on. Um I just want to make sure that I understand her correctly, that the drop-off pickup for parents in the back of the building that was provided as part of the uh uh the Safety Committee's uh report, it's my understanding, if I heard her correctly, that it's not working very well because it takes so long and parents are opting not to use it. If she's on and she can kind of verify that, that she.
Yeah.
Still on.
I I um I I think some parents try, but um generally, my understanding has been that it's not working. It hasn't worked that well, um the parents. You know, a lot of this comes down to this, the town and the school officials set up rules, and the and the parents just do whatever's convenient. And so so I, my my answer on that comes from parents who have said, I I'm not going back there at all. Uh I've never done that, I never will, um or just listening to some of the school officials who've said that. But you may want to check in with them now um uh about that.
Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public? No, okay. Okay, so with that, uh Mr. Davidson, if you would, we're going to give you the spotlight again. If um. Who's that? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you, so Mr. Davidson.
First one is the the field, right?
I would start with the field, that was the first question we were asked.
Not to be um uh trying to avoid this, but uh any any work inside the perimeter of the track was really not in the scope of our services. Having said that, we've heard a lot of comments about the size of the track. That's the first one I've heard about the size of the soccer field. Um I think that that's something that can be addressed when the turf is either restripped or but we didn't really look at changing the size or the shape of the track. It could easily be considered to add two lanes to the oval in the placement of the visitors' bleachers. And to, when you resurface the track, you can restripe it for various distances. You have an eight-lane straightaway and a six-lane track. There's only very few eight-lane straightaways and eight-lane tracks um in the area, and yes, we understand that that's desirable by a number of people. But that really could be addressed in how the visitors' bleachers are placed. Uh the home side bleachers um would be placed as close as possible to the eight-lane straightaway, so it really wouldn't impact anything that would happen in in Phase One. Um a lot of the other comments uh we've heard, um you know, everybody wants all of this to be done right away and and that's the overwhelming viewpoint that uh we've heard as just as a as witness.
You're you're still hearing a concern about the early phase of this addressing the neighborhood impact of the high school and the and mitigating the the traffic congestion that continues per Fosson O'Neil and what we all have seen at the most troubled intersections along with some of the high school driveways onto Hillside. Now, I know that that is not within the scope of this work specifically. Uh the commission discussed that yesterday and believed that it should be incorporated into this project before moving forward with something that is in more intensive, that some of the issues be addressed along that, and I think that's what you're hearing. Yes, there's people who want the ADA right away, there's people who are asking for the second egress right away, but there's also people saying this is messy, and it's been messy for a long time, and how can we rectify that?
Uh Mr. Davidson, quick question, um Nick McCray here. The um new bridge over the uh the creek there uh that connects the um the driveway and the parking lot, that's inside the wetlands buffer, as is the visitors' bleachers, am I correct? I'm looking at the plan, and I see a line that looks like the wetland setback.
It is, and you are correct.
So actually, um I I think you stated at the beginning, actually, the Phase Two schedule is quite extensive because of that, is that correct still?
That that that's going to be a lengthy process, yes, we believe it manageable, but you know, we've put together a budget for a bridge that gets the abutments um out of the water course area. Um, but, you know, tho- those things are gonna take a little bit more time to work their way through. And and again, the, the um, and uh, you know, we're the messenger here. Uh, and happy, happy to do that for, on behalf of the Board of Education, but the, the only reason this is being put in two phases is because of funding and because of the urgency to get bleachers that have failed replaced and the related work that should be done as part of that, done as part of that.
So, but if, if the um, if the bleachers are moved into the proposed location under Phase One, presumably that means that the size of the stadium can will never be up to regulation or what have you, because now the bleachers are in the way, right? Or no?
No.
So there is room to make, to, to, if, if for some reason it was decided in the future to make this, to do something to the turf, it could still be done even with the location of the bleachers?
Um, if you're talking about changing the shape of the oval track um to have a wider uh playing field, that'll, that'll never fit in this location.
Okay.
But, but just to clarify, you have the right to replace the bleachers in their current location as of right. And if this was so imperative, you could do that and file for a building permit and not relocate them. Correct?
Um, the current bleachers are not properly located to the field or track. Nor are they.
Well, that wasn't the, the, you, you stated they're in desperate need of repair. I'm just making the point that you could, you already have a variance for the existing bleachers. These are smaller than the existing bleachers. You're, you seem to be adding a lot more to Phase One without, but with your goal of Phase One being to replace the bleachers. And I, again, I'll say it again. My concern is, as we've heard from the neighbors, this access road is, is very important. And we're kind of approving half of it based on that at some point in the future, this road gets put in. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, the neighbors of Hillside have been dealing with this issue for 10 years and with no end in sight.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Fox, it's interesting, because I, i- it seems to me as a second egress from the parking lot, I'm not too sure, I'm really not convinced that this is going to provide uh any significant relief, uh relief. I think what's happening is that you're creating a driveway from the back of the site, but it comes out to another bottleneck. And it almost as if we're creating, yeah, here's a driveway we can use, but it comes out to a place that's not convenient, that's not um usable.
And I, and I agree with that. My point is, is this solution really a long term solution to deal with the traffic? And is this a cart before the horse?
I think, I think you're right. Actually, I think the traffic on Hillside is a wholly separate issue. And, you know, I think actually, um, uh, Mrs. Cole, actually, she had stated it, and it's one of those things. It seems that a lot of this had, had uh started with the start time change, and it has gotten worse and worse and worse in just recent time. Um, yeah, it always, always been bad, but now it's, it's significantly worse is, and in my opinion, is this just kind of a um, a Band-Aid on maybe a bigger problem that needs to be looked at to address Hillside? And, you know, not the bleachers, not this road, it's actually Hillside is the traffic problem that should be addressed separately.
Oh, absolutely. This is um, just the start of a conversation. We have to, we need more information. How, how does this new access really alleviate anything? Uh, you have a, a population which is uh not increasing, it's just uh, now you have another access point. Does something happen to, have to happen on um Putnam in order to accommodate more traffic coming off of this um access onto Putnam?
Yeah, but what, what I don't understand. I'm sorry, Mr. Lowe, if I could interrupt for a second, uh, I'm gonna let um Mr. um, Colligan um speak again uh because he had a comment to make about, one more comment about bringing it to compliance, the soccer field. Mr. Colligan, are you ready?
I, I am. Thanks, Ms. Alvin. Um, Mr. Davidson, the, the, there's no way if the bleachers are put in place as drawn and as is, that the soccer field will ever become regulation. I, I have no track runners. It just was an observation made to me by a a track parent. The field itself, while is fine for football at fifty-three and a third yards wide, the current corner flags on the soccer lines are two paces from the track. And I'm suggesting to you that a regulation soccer field is between seventy and eighty yards wide. So if you put bleachers in, the composition of the turf soccer field where all the varsity games are played and many others will never become regulation. And, and I just think, you know, I don't have an axe to grind. My, this is my 12th year and it's my last graduate. But since we're doing this and I'm all for it, it would strike me as something that ought to be looked at and, you know, dealt with before bleachers go in and another line stripe goes on the track.
Okay.
For letting me speak.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Davidson, um, I think that what might be helpful is, uh, Mr. Lowe, I'm sorry, you were gonna ask a question, and then I think if the commission just gave you a synthesis of where they're coming out in terms of how what they would want to see in an application that comes forward, that might be helpful to you guys. So first, Mr. Lowe?
Yes, all, all I was gonna say is, um, I, I, I have no doubt that uh opening up this uh extra access in egress onto the post road, it's gonna create new problems on the post road, but I, I think it's reasonable to assume that it would provide relief to Hillside. Now, recognizing that you're, you're uh, you know, taking something away from one part and then dumping it into another and creating another problem, but it would seem to me it's reasonable to assume that you would be providing relief along Hillside with uh, uh, that rear access. That's all.
Okay. Uh, so, um, Mr. Fox, do you wanna synthesize your thinking and give Mr. Davidson some guidance?
Well, I, I think that the Board of Ed really should deal with if this were building a premier stadium, the issues that Mr. Colligan brought out about um soccer and track. I think um, quite frankly, food trucks um is, is something I could care less about in Phase One. I think the Board of Ed has to come up with a traffic plan for this site that alleviates the traffic on Hillside. And if that plan includes a rear access, that access needs to be incorporated into Part One, so we have it's well thought out and coordinated with the DOT and the traffic counts, et cetera. Um, I just, I'm very concerned, we're looking at a very small issue with uh adding new seating and an elevator for a press box. And the only reason they're in front of us is because we want to look at the whole thing, and I think the traffic is, is a huge issue on Hillside and the post road.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McRae?
Uh, I think they've got to start, they've got to look at the, the rezoning. Uh, the variance for the tower. Um, I guess as part of this uh getting the MI through uh the Selectman's Office, uh, I think a, a hard study of the driveway alignment to overlook. Um, I think that's a critical thing because, you know, to me, to make this work as a uh proper egress from the site or access to the site uh as people have testified to, that's the only really way to make this properly work and be safe about it. Um, I think uh the, if, if it's going to be this one access point that's existing, um, I think actually uh including that as part of Phase, uh part, Phase One is important. Um, because I want, I don't want to have that kind of lost at the end. It's, it's one of those things. You have a curb cut, which we've, and all the curb cuts on the post road, we've been trying to minimize. Here's one that, you know, has always kind of been there. It's an emergency access, so now we're opening up to the public, but it's gotta be controlled. I think uh what Mr. Fox said was uh important to make sure that the DOT is in on this and they have comment back to us. Um, uh, I think actually, if anything, because we are looking at the stadium right now, and as Mr. Davidson had, had uh told us, really working on a timeline for bleachers and bleacher reconstruction, um, we have to have to kind of a separation between what really what's happening with Part Two and understanding that timeline and separate any issues that we have uh with traffic mitigation on Hillside. Uh, to me, that's a whole separate issue. Yeah, the driveway may help, but that's that, that traffic on Hillside is a whole different kind of thing that has to be addressed some way, some way different from what we're looking at here. Thank you.
Okay, before we go to the next commissioner, and I know this is a bit of a break with protocol. Um, um, Ashley Cole has raised her hand. As you guys know, once we stop hearing the public, we normally move on, but since this is our first one of these, um, I'm gonna go ahead and let her add her comments. Uh, Ms. Cole?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, it just have one comment because somebody said this would put more traffic on the post road. That's, that's actually incorrect. The traffic going onto the post road will be the same amount of numbers. Obviously, it will just come from a different egress point. It will just relieve the traffic on Hillside. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. So the, the amount of traffic on the post road should stay the same.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That, I think that's a helpful comment. Um, okay, so uh, Mr. Lowe, do you wanna, or Mr. Hardman, do you, would you like to uh make some sort of summary um comments?
I think what um, Mr. Fox and Mr. McRae have uh covered is, those are really the key points. This is a complex issue. Uh, it, it seems fixing the bleachers has sort of taken on a life of its own, which you know, this makes this quite complicated. And as Andy pointed out, you know, the bleachers, you know, more than is needed when there is room uh at the expense of food trucks in this specific location uh to accommodate uh perhaps um a soccer configuration as well. I, I do think this is the time for a comprehensive solution. You know, traffic needs to be addressed. Um, and I think that's, really needs to be a starting point in this, but I will say the caveat that maybe this is three phases. Could the bleachers be repaired if it were a more simplistic solution? Uh, as a simple Phase One, traffic is Phase Two, and then Part Two becomes Phase Three. That's just an overall comment. Final question. And I've been intrigued by the, the geometry of the football field size, the soccer field size, and then getting a four hundred meter or four hundred and forty yard high school track around it. Uh, do, are those incompatible? Uh, is a soccer field simply too wide to then have a regulation track around it? But that's a matter for uh uh the architect and the athletic director.
Yeah, I think you, the three of you are making an excellent point that the bleachers being replaced was kind of a Band-Aid. And, but everybody, the response to this, to it is, yeah, but you know, the patient's bleeding from a million other places, why not fix it all? Why just put a Band-Aid on this problem with the bleachers? And I think that's.
Let me, let me say this, Margarita, I, I, I think the bleachers are a significant issue and for a town of our size, a high school of our size and reputation, the bleachers should be fixed and.
Agreed. Well, they're not usable. They're basically condemned right now. I mean, they're not usable, as I understand it. Uh, maybe I've got that exaggerated, but um, yes, I agree with you. But there's so many issues that are going on that I think there's a concern about only addressing the tiny, the tip of the iceberg, if you will, is what the bleachers are.
Now, what, what I was trying to say is, is it simpler just to uh, you know, eat the elephant one leg at a time and one leg are the bleachers? And I'm sympathetic. I think the town deserves to have functional bleachers.
Yep. Very helpful. Uh, Mr. Levy?
Um, well, very well said. Um, yes, the uh coupling the bleachers with um um, a building below it is, and the, and glomming on the um the food trucks does complicate uh this considerably. Um, and it would be nice if Part One is a little simpler. And um, and I agree that the food trucks don't seem to be very important, but um it is, as a result, um still a little confusing to try to understand how to approach this because there are so many elements that are yet to be tackled that are even more important. Um, and the um, it is ominous to think that uh there's going to be that work on uh uh that DPW is going to be doing to further supplement the pa, parking, the um, the traffic problem uh soon. So um, it would be nice to uh get a little bit more clarity on, on how this will really work. Because there doesn't seem to be a great solution, no matter what you do.
Um, Mr. Yevsky?
Yes, I think a lot of people have said it. I think there was probably a lot of thought gone into this Phase Part One, Part Two, and I think people, we are bringing up a lot of these issues. Um, I, I get the feeling that there's a lot of uh other analysis. I think Mr. Davidson referred to it more as a budget or a timing or something. So I, I don't know. I think we've given him pretty clear direction back about where we dislike uh the fa, the Part One, Part Two. So, I mean, I can repeat everything people said, but it, it, I think it's fair to say we're not happy. I don't think the public is happy. Uh, there's probably a whole bunch of other budget-driven things that are pushing this that I'm not aware of, but uh he's got our feedback at this point.
Okay. Um, Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Goss, did you want to add anything or has it been captured?
I believe it's been captured and he does have our feedback, but one really issue for me is actually how many automobiles would be using the second uh driveway. That would help a lot, but I, I suppose it's, it's premature to have that information now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Lowe?
Victor, Ms. Ms. Goss, I think that's, that's a kind of a very interesting point. Because it would seem to me if I was in the back parking lot going to pick up or, you know, something's happening, something's happening at the end of, uh, either end of, of uh Hillside, you know, I'm gonna try to scoot out the back, back way here. So it could be that, you know, maybe one day you have ten cars and maybe the next day you have five hundred cars, who knows? And I think that's the kind of thing that I actually understand is that if uh Hillside is as bad as everybody is telling us, is this just gonna be just, you know, the, the, the uh, you know, the pressure relief of that, and it's just going to be screaming like a, you know, a tea kettle because there's so many cars going. And it's just going to be screaming like a, you know, a tea kettle because there's so many cars going out of it?
Okay. We have two, three comments that have come in, come in. The first one is from Steph Cowie. And she says the, the bleachers still need to be ADA compliant, and that's part of this design. This isn't about the food trucks, there needs to be ADA compliant seating bathrooms and parking. But she had basically said that to us before. Jay LeBrondi said there are already food trucks there that are at every game. Currently, they park on the south end of the bleachers and have a very difficult time getting in and out, as well as turning around. This would address that. And finally, Richard Fulton, the bleachers are able to be used at this point, is I think what he means. Cause I had, wasn't sure if they could be used, and are shored up with substantial scaffolding. The monthly cost is sixty-eight hundred. The initial shore, shoring up and four months of rent was paid for by the Greenwich Athletic Foundation. Okay, so with that, did you wanna make any comments?
Did you say low?
Yes, I said low.
Yeah, okay. No, I, I, I think...
Remember, you're the youngest, you're the youngest one. You're the baby commissioner.
Thank you.
You go last.
I, I, just to, not to repeat a little bit, but essentially, we're confronted with competing interests. The stadium upgrade proponents who see a way to achieving kind of a, a quick fix without having to get involved with other issues. And then those who are concerned with the ongoing traffic and congestion issues. And I think that the commission, I believe, needs to insist on the, a more holistic view right now. So I don't know, but that's different from what anybody else said, but that's what I believe.
Okay. All right, we got one more comment in. Yes, we got one more comment in from Elizabeth Dempsey. The police department is very much behind the road because of the safety issues and the problems that have already occurred during lockdowns. Believe, we, we did hear her say that earlier, that there's a problem during the lockdowns. I do hope that others look into this aspect in addition to traffic. Steph Cowie, again, I should have stated my previous comment is to address the issue of a simpler bleacher design raised by a member. Okay.
Ms. Alvin, can I, can I just?
Yeah, I was just gonna call on you because I'd like you to talk about some of the issues from your perspective because I think they're important. It's important that you, as the planning director, also give your thoughts on this.
Well, it, it, it seems to me that the, the primary point of concern here really boils down to this roadway and how it's going to be configured. And I have to say, I'm a bit concerned that, that that plan is not developed fully for when it comes back to you for the municipal improvement, the rezoning and the, and the site plan and special permit. I'm concerned that it's obviously a state road. I'm concerned that we don't have any comments from the Department of Transportation at this point that, that seem to be particularly solid. So, I just want the applicant to know that I think that they really should work with DPW and the DOT and the neighbors and, you know, FUSANIL, et cetera, to the greatest extent possible before that, before they, you know, present to you. Because that plan is gonna have to be signed off by DPW and they won't be able to sign off without the DOT. So I'm just, I'm just concerned that this all happened before they get to you. Because it, it won't really make much sense, it'll just delay things if it's in your, your forum.
I also wondered if you wanted to make any comments about the FAR?
Yes, the, the reason that the applicant has chosen to submit a rezoning is that the school is already well over their permitted floor area. The high school property, interestingly, is a, I think fifty-four acres, I had the numbers yesterday. And it's a split zone, so it is half, not half, it is partly in the R twenty and predominantly in the RA one. And they believe will be proposing to come in with a rezoning to make the entire property the R twenty zone, which would not only solve their non-conforming issues, but it would also allow them an extra, was it seventy-nine thousand that I told you yesterday?
Yes, in fact.
Yes. Seventy-nine thousand.
Seventy-nine, so, now, I just want everybody to know that that doesn't...
Let me ask you something.
Everything that happens on the property is subject to site plan and special permit that's, you know, of significant size. I'm not talking about garden sheds and things like that. But adding, adding any sort of significant floor area, of course, requires a very robust public process. So it doesn't mean that they get to build that as of right. It's, it's all subject to special permit. But that, that's why they're proposing to come in with a rezoning.
Katie, the question I didn't ask you yesterday about the rezoning, where, right now, it's a split zone. Is there a possibility of not, of, of doing a, some kind of approach that would bring the high school into compliance without giving it that expansion potential?
Well, I think that is, that's, yeah, that you could, you could do a text amendment would be one way to look at things. But that would apply, of course, to all properties that are school properties or potentially municipal properties, however you wanted to redo the, the language.
Can you move the, would you be able to move the zone line without rezoning the entire campus? Would that be crazy?
No, that's a possibility, if you want, that's, it's, it's the same process, it's still a map change. That, that's a possibility also.
Because I, I think there, I mean, it's, the, the question that begs itself is, well, if they were, we were always gonna see it, it wouldn't be over FAR today. So, it's putting in some sort of control, some sort of limit so that there is a public discussion when the high school wants to do something.
Yes.
And that's really our goal, is to make sure that it's an open and public discussion.
Right, I mean, it's, it's certainly a planning function, of course. And that, that how much floor area should be permitted at the high school is a, you know, community question, so to speak, in that way, which you have the ultimate control over in terms of the rezoning. So I think that that's, that's something that, that we, that should be discussed. And that, that is a solution, is to limit the amount of floor area that could be added and not just make it, you know, the full fifty-four acres, the R twenty. So that's certainly a solution. It's not very, it's not particularly elegant in terms of planning to have zone lines that just run through properties and not along property boundaries. But obviously, it's been done in the past. And I think as long as there's a rationale for it, it would be one solution.
Okay. All right, anything else from your perspective? I guess I would have a question for you on how this proposal, given that it's gonna be an MI, would fit in with the P O C D?
Well, you know, that's exactly what you're gonna have to opine on when it comes before you, assuming that the Board of Select moves it forward. I certainly, the P O C D talks about the, the ultimate conflict here, which is community character, traffic issues, and the fact that this is our only high school and wanting to have the best facilities that the town can afford, so to speak. And the P O C D, as you know, talks a lot about having top municipal facilities and top services and that being one of the primary draws to our community. But again, with all these things, it is, it is a balance point. And the reason why we have these open and public meetings, so that we can get all the points out there.
Okay, then. Does anybody wanna throw anything else in? Patrick, I didn't call on you, but that doesn't mean that we're not, you know, if you have something you wanna add, please do.
I could not possibly approve of Mrs. DeLuca's speech, so I will echo that.
I have a joke for you on that. Okay, it's not good in public. Okay, so, I guess that ends this discussion. And with that, if everyone's agreeable, we would end our meeting. We have one, we have one item to act on, which is if you wanna vote on the Greenwich Academy. And otherwise, if you wanna act on that tonight. And then that would be it for our meeting. Folks? Do you wanna?
Yes. I think we can act on it, or at least I can.
Okay, so, does anybody wanna discuss it at all, or shall we just hear a motion?
Let's hear a motion.
Okay. Seated on this application, again, is Alvin, McRae, Levy, Jeski, and Hardman. Mr. Fox is recused.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
Okay, two hundred North Maple Avenue, Greenwich Academy, PLPZ, two thousand nineteen, five one six and five one seven. Final site plan and special permit in the R twenty and RA one zones. Whereas the commission finds this is Phase Two of an overall master plan for the Greenwich Academy main campus and that Phase One, as approved April sixteen, two thousand nineteen, is under construction. The commission finds that A, the Inland Wetlands Commission has issued a green sheet December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. The Sewer Division, that a letter was issued by the applicant dated March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty, responding to the Sewer Division's request for information. An email from the Sewer Division to P and Z staff indicated the applicant has satisfactorily addressed comments and concerns brought up in this phase of the application and that remaining issues will be addressed in the sewer and building permit phase. The A R C reviewed the application at their April fourth, two thousand twenty meeting. And it is indicated that the applicant does not return for site plan or architecture or lighting review. That the applicant shall submit requested revisions electronically for the items to be noted. The zoning enforcement officer issued comments dated two nineteen, twenty, indicating that FAR analysis and gray plane computations for all buildings on the site will require to determine compliance of FAR and height. It's also noted that this is, this could be addressed at the time of zoning permit's dismissal. Engineering Division indicated the proposed reduction in lot coverage will qualify for a drainage exemption, as stated on the DPW Form SE one hundred, certified by the applicant's civil engineer, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. With that, motion to approve the application.
Hold on, hold on, did you get my trees? Did I miss?
No, not yet, hold on.
Okay.
Motion to approve the applications with the following conditions.
Okay.
Sewer, the applicant shall address any and all remaining issues with the sewer in, building, with the Sewer Division during the sewer and building permit phase. A R C, the applicant shall submit the following electronically for review. Provide additional detail or a three D drawing of the vestibule going in and out. Trees should be selected and placed in focal points and include trees of a larger caliber, such as three and three and a half inches, such as an American Beech in those areas, and to soften the strength of the architecture. The applicant may submit a memo statement indicating details of tree selection, including plant list and sizing. The applicant is to abide by all conditions imposed by previous site plan and Z B A approvals. Staff to ask DPW to investigate existing catch bases at North Maple and Hillside to verify that they are clear and working properly to address neighbor concerns of water issues on the streets. Ms. Alvin, did you want to add something more to the trees?
No, I think we're good, if, as long as they're getting reviewed.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second. What, sorry, Mr. McRae, did you make a comment about all outstanding conditions and?
You did.
Of, of, I'm sorry.
Uh, applicant to abide by all conditions imposed by previous site plans and Z B A approvals.
Thank you very much.
Great.
And who seconded it, it was tie, it seemed?
I think it was Mr. Hardman.
Okay, was it you, Dave?
Yeah, it was a jump ball.
I thought it was Andy.
Give it to Mr. Hardman. All in favor? I'm gonna start one by one and I'm gonna do it by who's on my screen. Mr. Levy?
Hi.
Mr. McRae?
Hi.
Hold on, it's Mr. Jeski.
Hi.
Mr. Hardman?
Hi.
And me, I, Alvin. Okay, and with that, you guys, we're gone, we're done, our meeting is over. Does anybody wanna have any discussion of anything else? The chairman opens the agenda. No? Okay.
Well, that was fun, everybody, I enjoyed that.
It worked very well.
Well done, Margarita.
You guys.
That was a very good occasion of fun, but thank you.
You can have a glass.
Good job, Patrick and Katie.
And who am I, chub me?
I just said, no, the first thing I said was, well done, Margarita, you missed it.
Oh.
It's, it's the audio is breaking up.